Okay, the first part of our meeting here tonight is just a public hearing. We have one item on our agenda. It's an application for rezone amendment for Richard Fryer requests a rezone from C1 to R2 residential. Let me start off here. From C1/R2 commercial residential to C1 commercial for property located at 0 North, Highway 27, Lafette, Georgia, tax map 0329-2-2020. The first hearing was approved by the Planning Commission meeting on November the 15th, 2018. So we do have an application where this is currently a split zoning. The property owners are requesting to go from the split commercial residential to a single zoning of a C1 commercial zoning. This has been advertised in the paper. Again, it was held at the first public hearing on the 15th. Is anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Any opposition of this request? Last call. All right, hearing done. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this request?
Do I need to say something?
You don't have to, but you're welcome. If you would, please stand and come to the podium.
Yes, sir. I'm Richard C. Fryer. What I'm trying to do on this piece of property is it's on 27 and Noble. You guys might have seen where the progress truck's in the sun is at. The first 250 feet is C1 and then in the back part, it was the old Noble Flea Market. And so it's always been kind of a commercial piece of property. It goes back in the railroad tracks or at the back of it. And so we hope to build an office there one day is what we're trying to do. And the residential part in the back where, you know, we would keep a maybe build a building to store stuff is residential, so it needs to be commercial. So that's the reason behind it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Is anyone else here in attendance tonight that would like to speak for or against this rezone request during our public hearing session? Okay, hearing done, we'll actually officially close our public hearing on that item. We will move over into our regular scheduled meeting. We'll open up our regular scheduled meetings. Again, it's Thursday, November the 29th, 2018 at 6:04 PM. We've already had our pledge and our invocation. There's packets out front and also this information will be available on our website for anyone that would like a copy of the full packet. We do have our minutes from a couple of meetings that we've recently had. We had a regular scheduled meeting back on November the 8th and also a special call meeting that we had on November the 21st. So in the packets is the meeting notes from November the 8th. Anyone have any questions or concerns or corrections from those minutes? Hearing done, we'll sign these into the record. Okay, and the next in the packet is the meeting minutes from the special call meeting which was held at the Commissioner's Office on 101 South Duke Street on 12 o'clock on November the 21st. That meeting was strictly just to have the bid opening for the paving project that we're going to take up later tonight in the meeting. So this was just bid opening only. The detail of those bids are summarized in these minutes. Is there any questions or concerns from those minutes as presented? That was a very short meeting. It lasted all of nine minutes. We'll sign these into the record. Okay, first item on our agenda is approval of a purchase order number 2019-0000132 for the Sheriff's Office. This is for a purchase request for courthouse security out of the capital funds. We implemented a policy last year on our budget. Any purchase orders over $15,000 that's outside the normal course of operations, which these are primarily capital type purchases, to be good stewards of the money and to communicate with our citizens and be as transparent as we possibly can to let people know how their tax dollars are being invested and be able to answer questions or comments. We implemented this policy and so we've only had a few and we do have a couple here tonight. And so we've asked Sheriff Wilson to come and just give a just a brief overview of what these dollars are being invested and how they're being utilized and see if there's any questions or comments from the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. This purchase order is for $19,824.20 to DSI Security Systems of Chickamauga, Georgia. And this work will upgrade the camera system for the main courthouse and courtrooms and will complement what we've done here in this new addition here, tie everything together. The old system is about, from my memory, is about 16 and a half to 17 years old since we installed those. The new camera system, and I have examples here if you want to look at them, comparing the old system to the new system as to what we could see. I didn't realize how bad the old system was till I looked at the new upgrade. So we're going about 16, 17 years since we replaced these. Anyone knows anything about equipment like this knows it probably needs to be replaced every five to seven years, if not sooner. So that's what we are doing. This new system, as I said, will give us improved visual security on our entrances and our courtrooms. We've contracted the same vendor that did this annex here, did the courthouse for us. The old system was starting to give us problems with interruptions and downtime, which is not good when you're in charge of security for courthouses and that's what I am charged with, the Georgia statute. Coming out of the 2005 Fulton County courthouse incident where, if you recall, there was, I know, one deputy shot, maybe two shot and killed. Then there were two or three innocent people shot and killed. The judge was shot and killed, the court reporter. And the legislature mandated that the sheriff of every county in the state develop a court security plan for each courthouse in the state. And it has to be signed off from the chief judge of that circuit. So about every two to three years, we review that and we have one in place. And it does call for, you know, the ability to have electronic visual examination of the courtrooms from a central location standpoint. So that's what we've done. This system will allow us to store video for 30 days versus 10 days on the old system. And we were able to install it and utilize our current wiring that we had and we did not have to utilize any additional wiring. I'll just show you two quick photographs here. The top one is the clear image is the new system. The bottom fuzzy green one is the old system there. And you can, I think, tell how well it was needed to be upgraded. We're always trying to be security minded. From time to time, you'll read in the paper or seal the news where there's been shootings, stabbings in the courthouse. There's a lot of domestic type things that are taking places in our courthouses and we try to, we don't ever want that to happen. So we want to try to keep the courthouse as secure and as safe as we possibly can.
One additional item to point out, this was in the original budget, so we're not actually amending or changing the budget. This was one of the capital projects that the sheriff had in his budget for FY '19. So this is just standard course of business since it was over the $15,000 threshold that we bring and disclose and answer questions publicly. So thank you. That's a great overview and explanation. Does anybody have any questions for the sheriff on this purchase order? Everybody did a great job. Well, thank you. So we'll...
I'm going to be excused if it's all right with everyone?
Got another commitment. We'll go ahead and sign off on this purchase order officially into our minutes and we'll get sheriff a copy of this tomorrow and put this into our record that we did approve this purchase order. Okay, we've got another purchase order approval. This one is concerning item number two, purchase order 2019-0000163 for the Walker County landfill for the chipping of all of our brush and wood debris. So I've asked Payne Gilli, our manager of our landfill and CND operation, if he would also give us an overview since this expenditure is a $25,000 expenditure.
Thank you. Good evening. As Commissioner said, this is for grinding our wood chips and our brush pile. We have our recycling program at the landfill and in part, part of our recycling operations is to renew the recyclables. And one way of doing that is to sell our wood chips to a factory in North Alabama. And we collect, we collect brush and wood from all over the county, from the road department, from different municipalities. And this stuff is stockpiled on site and then once a year, it's ground. Now, in the past, I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with the history of this operation, but in the past, a contractor was kept on retainer for $5,000 a month, whether he ground any materials or not. So in August of 2017, Commissioner and I were kind of scratching our heads saying that, you know, there's a better way of doing this. So we put this out to bid and we have, you know, five participants and we awarded the contract to Big Woody's out of Ulta W. And they're a regional grinder. All these grinders were from North Georgia and from Southeast Tennessee. They came in and they did, they did probably one of the largest piles that's been out there because it had been over a year since it had been ground up there. And they did it in, you know, less than 10 days. It was just a little bit over a week. And we had a few days because of weather and mechanical issues. And it worked well for us. And these fellows, these fellows actually offered to do, do it again this year and charge us the same rates that were charged last year. And given the widespread of the bid ranges, you know, from our participants, this really turned out to be a great opportunity for us to get, you know, the same company, the same rates. They're familiar with the site. They're familiar with our protocols, our site protocols. They're familiar with our people. And it was a great way to get them to come back in at the same rates that they charged, you know, last year. So this is, last year, you know, the cost was, let's see, looked like $22,504. The pile's a little bit bigger and a little bit greener this year. So we gave ourselves a little bit of a margin in there, but it's still within the same range of the cost that we expected last year. So, you know, with that, they're, hopefully, they're wrapping up a few projects this week. They should be out there next week to start grinding. So we're really excited about this.
Very good. And Payne and his team out there last year did a great job of managing this and substantially reducing the cost that had been expended in past years of doing this, this task. And it does allow us to grind this material up and that, as he mentioned, a large portion of that is actually sold to a company in Alabama that uses that for a heating source. They actually burned that, those chips as a heat source for their operations. So we get to use this, as he said, part of our recycling product program that we have for the county. We're not having to landfill this debris to, it slows down the filling of our landfill and it also allows us to recoup this investment of this funds because we're able to sell the chips from that. So is there any other questions on this? All right, we'll go ahead and approve this purchase order as well. For the record, okay. Item number three, this is just some annual housekeeping. We have a resolution R 4518 to authorize the filling of the application with the Georgia Department of Transportation and the United States Department of Transportation for public transportation assistance grant under the title 49 USC Section 5311. If everyone's okay with this, I was not going to go and read the detail of this resolution, but this is something that's done every year for our federal and state funding for our transit program. We talk every month about how important and how valuable our transit system is and how the federal and state gives us 90% of the funding for the purchase of the vans that we utilize. And then they provide us 50% of the funding of the daily operation of the fuel costs, maintenance and personnel costs. So this is just a housekeeping item that has to be done every year to show that we publicly are accepting that assistance. So we are publicly acknowledging that we are gladly accepting their funding assistance on a 90% basis for the capital outlay cost of the vans and then the 50% for the cost of operations. So this is a fantastic program for us. So I will take and sign this resolution and then we'll have our attorney notify us this. Okay, item number four is a resolution 4618 to award a contract for a local maintenance asphalt project. I will read this one because this is out of the norm for us. Resolution R 46-18, a resolution of the Sub-Commissioner of Walker County to award a road paving project for Diamond Circle. This is just in the north of the city limits of Ross, excuse me, of Lafette, north of Lafette. Whereas OCGA 324-68A provides that where a contract has been let for bid that the county be, by resolution enter into the minutes shall award the contract to the lowest reliable bidder provided that the county shall have the right to reject any and all such bids. And whereas Walker County, Georgia, let the bid for road paving project for Diamond Circle. And whereas among the four bidders, three bidders completed the site visit with a public works director or designated as required by the contract document in terms of the award. And whereas among the three bidders who fully complied with the requirements for bidding, tally construction presented the lowest bid. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sub-Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the contract for paving Diamond Circle is hereby awarded to tally construction for the amount specified in the tally construction bid, so resolved and adopted the 29th day of November. So in your package, you will see the proposed bids, the tally construction bid was the lowest. These don't have the tolls. Do y'all, do y'all have this added up? Y'all want to add?
It's in the bits of your...
Oh, okay. We got it to the open. I will just cover that. Because they, some of them totaled it on their bid documents, some did not. So the, okay. Is this one? Northwest Georgia paving. And Northwest Georgia paving was $244,880. CW Matthews was $343,600. Tally construction being the lowest was $225,240. And Bartow Paving Company was $235,336.80. So again, tally construction with their complete bid at $225,240. The funding for this, we will take and pay 70% of this out of the 2017 L-MIG funds. The other 30% will come out of our T-Splash dollars that we have been accumulating over the last few months since April. So none of this funding will come out of the general fund or anything from property taxes. This is all being paid for and driven by our state grant of 70% and then 30% from our T-Splash. Okay, item number five, we have a resolution R 4718 to declare Walker County Sheriff's Office...
Excuse me, question?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Concerning the contract bid under the proposed fee form, it says that we as a county is responsible for hauling the millings from the site. Do we know what that's going to cost us and what are we going to do with the millings?
Well, actually, on this ticker one, what's being referred to as the millings, where we did some patch work with crusher run rock.
Yeah, I saw that.
When they take that out, we're going to recover that because it's like new rock. And so we'll stockpile that and keep that to use that on other projects. Good question.
Sorry.
No, it's a good question, good question. Okay, resolution R 4718 to declare property to Walker County Sheriff's Office unservable surplus and remove from county inventory. Resolution R 4718, whereas OCGA 369-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may by order enter into its minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of or made and execute good and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county. And whereas the sheriff has requested the property listed on exhibit A be deemed unserviceable surplus and further requested that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sub-Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the property listed in exhibit A attached hereto may deport hereof be hereby declared unserviceable and destroyed forthwith, so resolved and adopted 29th day of November 2018. So in that memo that the sheriff has signed off on, there is a listing of some Dell laptops and Dell desktop computers and a couple of Garmin GPS and a desk copier. So it's just some older technology equipment that they no longer have a use for and so these items will be surplused. Okay, item number six, we're in acceptance of a whole M security grant for Walker County Emergency Management System. So I've asked our emergency management director, Fire Chief Blake Hodge, if he would speak to this grant and tell everyone how much it is and what the funding will be used to provide.
Thank you, Commissioner. The, this is a sub-grant, which means the federal government has funded the state of Georgia, Georgia Emergency Management, and then they then apply it as needed across the state upon request. Historically, this grant has been used every year for our CERT team members and projects that we do with our community emergency response team. We did not, as funding is declining through the grant system and federal funding over the past few years, we did not receive it last year. So we're very fortunate and glad to see it back that we did get it this year. It's for the amount, in the amount of $4,821. The Deputy Director Curtis Krieger and Nadine Gilvan, who is the coordinator for CERT, put this together and prepared it, so I want to thank them for what they did. Curtis Krieger generally manages it every year. There's a management with this. It's not, there's no match. The county has to match no money. It is, we will have to purchase the items on the list and then apply for reimbursement. So again, it's important to know that there's no match. That's always good. Some items that it's going to cover, a case of emergency blankets. The case is about 100 blankets that we get. Triage training kits. We're looking at doing, we're hopefully going to be doing two classes in 2019. We're at least going to get one. We're sending two to three people to train the trainer. So if you're interested or you know anybody that's interested in the community, we would like to expand this program. It was really, really big and really active at one time, to my understanding, and it has, as attendance and stuff has dropped and interest has dropped in it. So we're trying to push that back out and, you know, grow this program again to even close to where it was would be outstanding. So most of the stuff in here are the CERT kits, which is what the individual receives after the training class, which is helmets, vests, flashlights, shirts, hats, 4-on-1 emergency tool, which is used to shut off gas and water in the event they need to do that. Some weather radios, collapsible wagons or a wagon, which is what they're using in the view of a, of a, any type of event or anything, disaster, anything, they're using that to carry supplies. There's instructor fee in here for actually teaching the classes and stuff and then, of course, the freight to ship it. Those are the items listed in it. So they didn't, again, didn't get this last year, so we're a little bit behind on some stuff with the CERT team, but looking forward to what this is going to help us do in 2019 and hopefully grow that program.
Okay, good, very good. Thank you. Any further questions for Blake Hodge on this? Anytime we can get funding from the federal government through our state and not have to do any match, it's always welcomed and helps us be better prepared. So we will accept this grant and sign this into the minutes of our meeting. Okay, earlier in the meeting this evening, we had our public hearing on this zoning request. So we have an application for rezoning for Richard Fryer requests a rezone from C1/R2 commercial residential to a straight C1 commercial for property located at 0 North Highway 27, Lafette, 30728, tax map 0-329-2-020. This was recommended by the Planning Commission to be approved. At the public hearing tonight, we heard no one speaking opposition. I've not received any letters, phone calls or anything showing that anyone has any issues or problems with this. So we will approve this zoning request and allow them to move forward with this. All right, anyone else on the team have anything else to add to the meeting?
Yes, sir.
At this time, we'll adjourn our regular scheduled meeting and at this time, we always like to open up the floor for any general discussion that anyone would have. We have been limiting this recently to five minutes per individual that would like to speak. So if anyone has anything that they would like to address the county government leadership team on tonight, we ask that you come to the podium and speak your name and we'll give you five minutes to talk about what's on your mind and if we need to stay extra and have additional conversation, we'd be more than happy to. But just out of respect for everyone in the room tonight, we've been requested that we start limiting the comments to five minutes. So is there anyone tonight that have anything they'd like to bring before this group? All right, everybody's pretty quiet tonight. Well, we thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight. It's a pleasure to serve as your commissioner and we are always thankful for people that's involved in their local government and wanting to stay informed and stay in tune and take the time to come and be a part of the process. So thank you for coming. Thank you, team, for being here. And we are officially closed business for the night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.